This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the December 9th, 2021 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. Tonight, we'll begin with the organizational portion of the board meeting, and I will turn it over to First Selectman Frida.
So for the new members of the board, I wanted to explain that every two years after a municipal election, by North Haven's Town Charter, the first selectman, the chief elected official of the town, has to go to every board and commission across the town. And what we do is we ask for nominations for a chairperson, a vice chair, and a secretary to organize the boards for the next two years. So tonight, I'm here for three orders of business. To have this board elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary for this Board of Education. So without further ado, I'd like to start by asking if there's any nominations for a chairperson for our Board of Education here.
I would like to nominate Anita Anderson as chair of the Board of Education.
Okay, we have a nomination. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Amanda on the second, Joe with the nomination. Are there any other nominations? Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anita, congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Second order of business, ladies and gentlemen, and those watching on North Haven TV, is to once again now ask for a nomination for a vice chair of the North Haven Board of Education. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to have Joe do it again. So, Joe.
So we have a nomination for the current vice chair, Joe Salamania. Is there a second on that?
A second.
All right, we have a second. Elaine? Is there any other nomination, or are there any other nominations? All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Joe, thank you for your willingness to serve as a vice chair. And the last order of business, ladies and gentlemen, for me here tonight, is to ask for a nomination for secretary of the North Haven Board of Education. Is there a nomination?
I think if we can do it, let's continue with Randy. I'd like to have Randy.
Randy here tonight?
No, she's not. She cannot make it tonight.
All right, so I'll ask for a formal nomination.
I formally nominate Dr. Randy Peterson.
All right, so we have a nomination for Randy Peterson. Is there a second on that nomination?
A second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Is there any other discussion? All right, ladies and gentlemen, so hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So that concludes my order of business this evening. I'd like to thank each and every one of you here, not only the Board of Education members, but our staff, our faculty, our superintendent of schools, Russ Dallies here, our principal of this marvelous high school. I thank you for your service to our town and your commitment to our children and your relentless commitment to advancing education here in the town of North Haven. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you, Mr. Frida. Now do I go on? Okay, now I can share the meeting.
I just wanted to go.
Okay, so we're kind of just, everyone has our agenda. Next on our agenda is Patrick Sturck, Melinda McKenna, and Dr. Dallie are going to do a presentation of vision of the Vision of the Graduate for the 2023 High School Graduation Requirements. I am going to move to go down there, so you all can see that.
I will move as well, so I'm not in the way. Good evening, everyone. So if we go back to the beginning of fall 2019, we began work on the establishment of the North Haven Public Schools' Vision of a Graduate, as well as conducting some strategic planning that was needed to flesh out the desired skills and dispositions. The board actually participated in a strategy session, I guess it was two years ago now, in the winter of 2019, 2020, around that area. And the entire North Haven community also had an opportunity to weigh in on the Vision of a Graduate and what they believe was vital for the success of NHPS graduates upon leaving the district. And amazingly, we had over, about, right over 200 responses from the community. And during that planning process, back in the fall of 2019 and the winter of 2020, a team of teachers, parents, and administrators collaborated to dive into this strategic planning needed to support the BOG. Unfortunately, the pandemic gave pause to a large portion of this work until earlier this year. So this planning was the initial springboard to develop the high school's mastery-based diploma, diploma assessment, sorry, as well as the reboot and alignment of the district's curriculum. Melinda and Russ will dive a little deeper into that work in a moment. But in regards to the Vision of a Graduate, this document, which has a large blown-up copy at each of your seats there, will become the foundation to all of our work within the district. And the next steps will include somewhat of like a marketing aspect to ensure that the district's Vision of a Graduate is synonymous with North Haven Public Schools. So the current visual, like it is now, will need to be updated and highlighted across the district and the community. So right now, I'll move out of the way and turn it over to Melinda.
Okay. I will begin by highlighting some of the work as it pertains to the...
Can I ask you to pick up your microphones? Sitting back here, now I can hear how hard it is for us to hear people.
Is that better? Okay. I will begin by highlighting some of the work as it pertains to the district, and it expands from pre-K all the way to grade 12, and the implications this work has on our curriculum revision efforts. The competencies and dispositions which are embedded in our Vision of a Graduate will drive all of our instructional work moving forward. We are beginning most directly at the high school level by using the Vision of a Graduate as our North Star to cross-check current curricula and make sure we need to make any necessary revisions. The North Haven Teaching and Learning Focus Document, which Russ will show us in a few minutes, puts an emphasis on rigor, student-centered engagement, and feedback that fosters learning. This tool is the foundation of our work. Department-based teams have been working to enhance our curricula in all areas and to design these instructional roadmaps in the same format using a curriculum template that is common across all areas. And it emphasizes literacy and the components of a Vision of a Graduate. After the new year, this work will begin to move to the middle school level, and in time, we will infuse the competencies and dispositions into our elementary buildings, of course, in an age-appropriate manner. Additionally, we're building rubrics to align the Vision of a Graduate competencies. We have drafts at both the high school and middle school, and then we'll begin work at the elementary later this year. This past Friday, during our professional development time, I had the opportunity to sit in with our science and math departments as they worked on their areas. The work is extremely impressive, and at Advance, one of the state's regional education service centers actually asked if they can use it as an exemplar to share with other districts. Before I turn it over to Russ, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him, as well as the high school administration, district coordinators, and the high school teachers for their enthusiasm, commitment, and dedication to this very important work. The professional learning dialogue and instructional probe that is the product of this endeavor is very impressive, and it's creating amazing learning opportunities for our students. It doesn't go anywhere.
Do you want me to move the speaker?
I'll just lie down and speak. Thank you very much, Superintendent Sturck, and thank you, Assistant Superintendent McKenna. And thank you, members of the Board of Ed. You want me to use this? Is this going to reach? You know, I'm a drummer. They don't give me a microphone. This is very exciting for me. Is that better? Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you to this Board of Education for all of your support. The work that we're able to do at the school is a reflection of that support, and I hope you're going to be pleased with what I'm able to share with you today. Let me try to stand out of the way of it. So this brief presentation is an overview of the curriculum work we're doing at the high school, the academic focus we have, and some opportunities for our students that we'd like to share with you. So I'll start with the high school core values and beliefs statement. And so our belief is that, as a result of their experiences at North Haven High School, students become thoughtful, responsible, independent members of a diverse global society. And Peter knows the pledge comes after that every day, right, Xena? We share that with our students every day. It's how we start our announcements. It's something we believe in. The second paragraph of this core values and beliefs statement talks about the fact that that work can only be done in a community. And that community is you, our students, our parents, our businesses, our first selectmen. So as Melinda said, we have a document that highlights really the pillars of our teaching and learning standards. These are the things we value most. And our belief is that, you know, there are some instruments that measure teaching and learning that are 40 pages long, and they're really unmanageable. These, we think, represent really important and leverageable parts of what our teachers do to prepare for students and what our students do to actually do the act of learning. So rigor being challenging, meaningful, new learning that is aligned with standards and individualized as appropriate. Student-centered engagement is interesting and varied learning, and it's characterized by student ownership and student choice and a connection to the world beyond school. And feedback that fosters learning is the idea that, as you learn, you need to have the opportunity to know what you've done well, what you've not done well, and how to make things better. So it is timely. It's individualized feedback, and it's important to recognize that it comes not only from the teacher, which is our traditional venue of feedback, but also from peers, and maybe most importantly, from oneself. And the ability to give yourself feedback depends on the clarity of the task, the opportunity to work with people and talk about it, and exemplars for your work. So that's our instrument, and those are our major points. Now, the Vision of the Graduate, which is not only a high school document, but a district-wide document, has two categories. On the left are the competencies. These are the intellectual and academic skills that we believe every student must possess and that we are weaving through all of our curricular work. They are informed thinking, problem-solving, communication, and collaboration. On the right side are the dispositions. Dispositions are qualities of mind and character. And if you look at these, I think you'll understand that successful people have the capacity for self-direction, emotional intelligence, empathy, diligence, and civic engagement. This board has always represented civic engagement well and supported us through our community service requirement. So these dispositions are things we want students to have in order to succeed, and by the time they leave our school system as well. These, as you have seen before, just a reminder, these are the new credit requirements for the class of 2023 and beyond. These are the state requirements. So a few of the changes from previous requirements to this set are the categorization of credits by these broad categories of STEM and humanities. You make measurements now as to how many credits you achieve in both of those. There has been the addition of a world language credits, a single credit. In fact, the vast majority of our students take more world language credits than that, but in keeping with the law now, every student will take a world language credit. PE, of course, we've always had health increases from a half-credit to a credit. And then we have the mastery-based diploma assessment, which I'm going to talk to you about in just a bit more detail next. So the MBDA, the Mastery-Based Diploma Assessment, this is really a chance for us to ensure that our students are meeting our elements of Vision of a Graduate. And the way it works is that there are two halves to it. So the competencies, which we talked about before, those being the academic skills that students have to have are met in our classrooms through quality, project-based learning, significant learning tasks. Those really weave throughout all four years, but they're measured in 11th grade for students. We think that's a point of maturity at which the quality of the work can be high, but it also gives us 12th grade, if there are any students who struggle, so that we will have time to support them and intervene so that they can demonstrate this in time to graduate with their peers. You could also meet some of these goals through quality performance on some standardized tests, and elements of these tests align with various of the competencies. The dispositions are not academic skills, so they're not met through typical academic work, but rather, they're reflected upon by the students. So we're now designing a journal sort of portfolio that students will work on in an advisory setting and independently, and they're going to reflect on what they've done to demonstrate achieving each one of those five dispositions we looked at. And they can reflect on their work in school academically, on their sports, on their activities, whatever that is, whether it's theater or one of our 50 clubs, at the jobs they hold outside of school, or anywhere in the community, their community service itself. So I think this is a wonderful addition to what we're doing here, and it kind of sews up nicely our commitment to this Vision of a Graduate, which also is being woven throughout our curriculum that we're developing now. The last piece I want to share with you, and I thank you again for supporting this, because I think this is going to be fantastic for our students, is the opportunity to do an independent internship. So starting in just a couple months, in the spring semester, our students are going to be able to design an independent internship at an area of business or organization where they're going to be able to work and shadow people. It's not for money. It actually earns them credit. But most importantly, it opens their eyes to different career opportunities, to working with people, to being alongside experts in their trade, and to getting a sense of what it means to have a career and whether a career is suitable to a student. So I want to thank our committee. We meet weekly. Every Tuesday morning, we meet to work on this. And that's Carol Ardito, who is the head of our career department, Amy Alessi, who is a business teacher, and then Anthony Giordano, who is our new library media specialist and a former social studies teacher. So we've made great progress in this. Again, thank you guys for the support and making sure that everything we do is legal, safe. We want to protect the school and the board. But most of all, we want to give students this opportunity. So the students will make a proposal. They'll be supported by those faculty members in designing this. We will involve parents. There will be ample notifications, signatures, clarity about it, and it will be a lot of independent work. And I also would like to thank our first selectman, Mike Frida, because I reached out to him and asked, and of course, he always says yes to us. He said, of course, he would be a liaison with us in area businesses and organizations to open doors for our students. So we're going to hopefully have a slate of available opportunities, but we're also going to allow students to find their own opportunities. There may be businesses, organizations, we don't know of, haven't talked with, haven't thought of, that align with their needs, and those are going to be open doors to them too. We will help them make those things work. So that...
Brett?
Yes. Yes, please.
What about for those students who are not going down to a secondary school, but perhaps going to a technical school? Will they be allowed to take part in this?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, no, it's a good question. This internship is not mandatory. It is an option, and it is absolutely available to every student. So yes, I mean, I think that group you mentioned, students who are going to go into a trade or a field that doesn't require a traditional graduate degree or, you know, four-year undergrad degree, 100%, is a wonderful course for them. Build relationships, build skills. Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Can they do it more than once?
Possibly. I think when we get started, we want to have new students do it before we have students double back. But one of the nice things that happens at the high school in terms of our structure is we set our course sections by student requests. So as the interest grows, then we're going to have to look at how to staff these courses adequately so that more students can have the opportunity. And I don't, I think there's no reason we could not avail kids of this opportunity more than once. We just have to make it scalable and ensure that we can staff it adequately so that we provide them ample, you know, preparation and attention.
And if you remember, we did some pilots with the technology department, and we had students who began in the fall and are currently doing it and are really thrilled at how this is working. They're doing it in the building, but they're shadowing people in our tech department.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will now turn it back over to Superintendent Sturck, who's going to take it from here, and I thank you very much for your kind attention.
This is really simply the last slide, and this has been our guiding light. As always, the district mission statement, all of our planning, all of our development, all of the vision of the graduate work has all been in service to this, the district mission statement. This is what the board developed, and this is our guiding light. So we're happy to answer any questions moving forward or any thoughts you may have. Thank you.
You know, your board, we always ask in the middle of the presentations.
I do have a couple more though.
Yeah, me too.
Let me go into the voting point, and then we'll go into the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, you guys okay with that? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the North Haven Public School Vision of a Graduate?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay, now let's have our discussion.
So what does this change look like and what will it feel like for the students who are in high school now specifically? And then how will that change be castigated down to the elementary schools and the middle school? You touched on it a little bit, but I need to just hear a little more on that.
You want me to take the high school part? So I mean, I think in some ways, the change is implemented with a new class. So I think it would be an incremental change for those students. We'd begun already last year to share with them the new requirements. We're in very good shape, because we were already at 24 credits as a graduation requirement. The state requirement, up until this law, was only 20. So there are some schools that have a significant change to make. We've been in good shape. As I said, we've already had a half-credit of health that goes up to one credit. We already have high requirements for English, science, math. Now they're also categorized that way. So I think the change is going to be clear and manageable to students. I also think our eight-block schedule, over the course of four years, allows them more than adequate opportunity to gain the credits needed.
And I can just speak from a district perspective on that and a curricular perspective. This gives us a lens to go back into what we're currently teaching and look at everything with the eyes around. Are we meeting these competencies and dispositions? And are we really looking at the Vision of the Graduate as kind of our end result? And that trickles all the way down from middle school to elementary, where, of course, it will be more age-appropriate when we think about some of these dispositions at the elementary level. But we begin teaching those right from pre-K. We want kids to collaborate and work with each other. And so this just becomes a building block for us. And like I said when I first started, it's really a North Star for us. It will help us to double-check everything that we're doing to make sure that all decisions we make, any materials we buy, any programs we buy, are they in service to our Vision of a Graduate?
And Melinda, did you have some questions?
I had a question about the internships again. What if, like, someone in town wants to provide an internship? So like, we got so many people in town who do so many different things. Some own their own businesses, some do a whole bunch of different stuff. So would they, like, is there someone they can contact and say, hey, we have this internship opportunity. This is kind of what it looks like. Is this something you guys would be interested, or how does that work?
Yeah, absolutely. And what Mr. Frida and I had talked about was the idea of maybe sending a letter out through the Chamber of Commerce. And he actually, and I hope I'm saying this right and not misrepresenting, but I believe he invited me to address one of the business groups that he speaks to. He certainly said he would serve as a kind of a go-between so I could convey this opportunity to them. So yes, we would put out there an explanation of what we're offering, ask for people who would be willing, and then we could start the communication with them. And then it'd be a question of matching that up with a student who might have that interest for that particular semester, but absolutely.
And we've been purposeful about keeping some staff with some blocks free in order to really work on this initiative, because it's going to require networking with the community. It's going to require networking with kids and conversations around right fit and all of that. So we've got those resources in place for this spring pilot, and then it's something we're continuing to plan for moving forward as well.
Yeah, I mean, and we're using that time now to do all this planning. And it, you know, I mean, I'm giving you the concepts, but you can imagine that the work behind the scenes, you know, is dozens of pages and legalese and everything else, and the preparation of the journal and exemplars for that, and the lesson plans that would go with implementing it, advisory. So those teachers are doing a great job and great work right now.
And when I had said it in my introductory pieces, it really has been a full effort from the whole high school, from administration to the teachers, the coordinators, and it really has taken root. And now that will perfectly align down to middle school first, because we want our curriculum to be the same exact template and to mirror the high school just obviously with middle school standards. Elementary will look different, but there will be threads that are the same when we get down there as well.
Thank you.
Anyones have any questions? Okay, may I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for your work on this. We all look forward to seeing how it progresses throughout the year.
Well, I thank our teachers. They're working so hard, and I thank you all very much for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is the approval of our November 10th, 2021 Board of Ed regular meeting minutes, the resignation of our North Haven math teacher, Mr. Carl Jackson, and a request from Christine Tada to extend her leave for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there was any opposed. Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to go to our Board of Education's Student Representative Report. Alex Franciato could not be here tonight. I don't know if he shared anything with you, Xena, but we will now go to Xena Mohammed to speak to us. Xena, is there a microphone near you? Here. I apologize, Xena.
So the National Honor Society is selling bracelets and t-shirts to raise money for the Smiloe Cancer Hospital. And on that same note, Key Club is also holding an event where our students can make Christmas cards for Smiloe patients which will take place after school on December 13. The November Food Drive was a success with over 500 items donated, and senior class collected most donations and won a $150 reward for their class fund. The Quarter Two midpoint is next week, and there is English and math tutoring available on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school in the library. The North Haven High School Winter Concert is set to take place December 21st from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And the high school students voted on a new mascot on Tuesday, and we're just waiting to hear the outcome of the voting.
Do you want to have any questions for Xena? Thank you, Xena. Sorry to put you on the spot with the microphone. Okay. Never give somebody a microphone. Right now, down to the report of the Board of Education's Chairperson's report. What I'd like to start this meeting, my report, was to introduce Marie Devlin, who is our new Board of Ed representative. Marie and I and Patrick had a chance to talk earlier this week, and so I prepared her and told her I'm going to ask her to tell a little bit about herself tonight.
Thank you. I'm very privileged to join this Board of Education. My background is as a nurse, I'm a registered nurse, and have worked as a nurse for over 45 years. Most of my experience has been in the acute setting, and I've done various roles, including management, education, and obviously, patient care. I'm very excited to start. I would be considered a very novice in this area, but plan to learn a lot and hope that I can contribute in a meaningful way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie, and I know all of us look forward to working with you and putting you on committees. That was number one. Number two is... Number two is, I'll wait for that one second, is I just want to remind everyone, I know Amanda's going to discuss it a little later, but I do want to remind everyone about the Special Board of Education meeting that will be held here Monday night. And finally, I also want to discuss, last year we had talked about having parent representatives sit on the board, similar to what Xena is doing. Throughout this year, excuse me, I didn't have the opportunity to really sit down and say, okay, what are we looking for parent reps to give to us? So after talking with Patrick, we thought that we would start this year and have the co-presidents of the PTA Council be our parent reps. They'll alternate, they'll start in February, and they'll alternate. And I really feel that they have their hands on the pulse of the community and can share a lot of things with us. I just wanted to let everyone know, and they'll start that job rotating in February. And that would be Kristen Cohen and Jen Gering. Thank you. Any questions, home? Okay. And then next, we're going to go down to reports of the standing committees. As we know, Dot Logan had been representing the board at ACES. And Amanda, we want to ask you if you'd be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay. So if you can do that, we can work with Patrick and we'll get you in touch with the superintendent of ACES School. And then you would just report back to the board after those meetings.
All right.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have Curriculum Instruction and Planning. Melinda?
We did not meet, but we are meeting on Monday prior to the Special Board meeting. And Aleny is going to join our committee, and Jen Chigarelli, and Joe will remain out. So we'll be back to a committee of three.
Great, that'll be great. Next, North Haven Education Foundation.
Thank you. So the North Haven Education Foundation met yesterday morning. They discussed their current and future fundraising plans and the unfortunate impact that COVID is having on them. And the foundation continues to look for new board members. So if anyone is interested, you're welcome to reach out to me or to Mr. Bernie Pellegrino as well. Thank you.
Keep it with you. Next, we're going to go to our policy. It's the approval of the non-discrimination policy, the community one. Sure, I'm going to follow procedure here. May I have a motion to approve the non-discrimination community policy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's go into our discussion.
So, board members, this is just a technicality, an omission more or less. Last month, the board approved the parent and the, I should say, the staff and the student non-discrimination policy. However, we did not mention the community in the motion. The community part of the policy has been in all of your reads, so I just didn't want to overlook that, and I thought it would be appropriate for the board just to take a final vote on that. So although it's been in your packets and it was included, I just didn't want it to be neglected.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Goldie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you for bringing that up. Next, we have our superintendent's report.
We have a couple more.
We did? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't turn, I turned, I didn't turn the page properly. PTA Council, you want to give that?
Okay, since Randy's not. So PTA Council met this past Tuesday. Each of the schools reported their fundraising efforts and upcoming family events, again, trying to navigate COVID with this, and they're really doing a fine job trying to have events for each of our schools. And plus, Ms. Addison provided a brief report on the special education section of the council, and I think that's a new section that they've added to the PTA council, and I think there's more to come from that, so thank you.
Can you pass that to Amanda?
Okay.
I think I got one of this one.
Okay, good. Next, we'll go to our ad hoc committee for the mascot committee.
Thank you. So the mascot committee has narrowed down our final options to just six. They are the Night Fox, the Phoenix, the Ravens, the Wolf Pack, the Storm, and the Fisher Cats. Voting officially started on Monday, and it continues through tomorrow, which is Friday, the 10th at 5:00 p.m. Digital ballots are available online, and paper ballots can be found at Town Hall, the library, and the senior center. Students started voting on Tuesday at the middle school and high school, and elementary schools are on track to wrap up tomorrow. The ballots have been pouring in from the community all week, and we passed the number to indicate statistical significance based on the population a few days ago. So I want to thank everybody for participating and making this a true community event. We will present the highest vote getter to the board at a special meeting on Monday, December 13th, for a final vote. I've spoken with several folks involved in PTAs at various levels of the district, and they're really excited to start Spiritware fundraisers that can contain the new logo and the new mascot. The involvement from the community has been emblematic of this community's commitment to North Haven. I'd like to personally thank the mascot committee for their work on this effort. The students, teachers, administrators, booster club members, community members, and native folks worked very hard to get this across the finish line, and I hope that everybody remembers to vote before tomorrow at 5:00.
Thanks, Amanda. Mr. Sturke?
Good evening, everyone. So the bulk of my update was covered in the presentation earlier, but I do have a couple items to discuss with the board. I just wanted to provide a social media update. Sorry, this is just too tight for me. Is it caught?
Maybe Amanda's would be better for you. Which one did, Russ use?
It's just stuck underneath.
Is it on the chair? I'm sorry.
We have our own audiovisual person in Howard.
Thank you, perfect.
He's not teaching art.
Okay, so to update the board and the community regarding the concerns on the social media and the presence of the NHHS Threat Team Instagram page, there continues to be no known threats to the district or any school. The North Haven Police Department has been tremendous in their support and willingness to take action to remove this page. I've communicated with Chief Glenn, Police Chief Glenn, and Fire Chief Janishevsky almost daily, and Chief Janishevsky serves as the town's emergency management director, so that's why I'm heavily involved speaking with him as well. And we're just staying on the same page, we're keeping each other abreast of any new developments. And it's especially concerning since some of the threats that have happened are on ACES campuses in North Haven. So I appreciate the back and forth, and even with the executive director of ACES reaching out to us and keeping those lines of communication open as well. So I hope I don't have to, but I will continue to provide the community and the board updates as needed. And next month is January, Board Workshop Month?
Yee-haw.
Budget workshop, I'm sorry, Budget Workshop Month. And so they've traditionally been held in January, and during the regular board meeting is normally turned into a budget workshop. So I'm proposing just a couple of dates to see if they work for the board. If they don't, we'll obviously figure out other dates. But just the final date of transmission, Howard, is January 27th. It's a Thursday, so that's when it needs to be over to the town. So I'm proposing the first budget workshop be on January 11th, it's a Tuesday. And then the regular board meeting is also that week, it's the 13th, so the board could use that as a workshop as well. And then, just to keep a third tentative date, just in case we need it on the following week, it could be, you know, any date that week that works for the board. And that will leave Howard and I time to settle and get everything ready to transmit over to the town on the 27th. And just as a note, the board usually starts these meetings a little bit earlier, 5:30, 6 o'clock, than the typical Board of Education meeting.
And at these meetings, will we be presented with the budgets from, like we always do?
Like we always do, yes. Each department and each school will have a time slot to present to the board.
Okay.
And I think it's important to have the third date in schedule just in case there needs to be additional discussion.
Okay, I'm looking at the January 3rd for Thursday, and I just think there might, we might need to have a regular board meeting that night. So we'll just play that one by ear as we get closer to the beginning of January.
So 111, 113, and question marks?
And question marks.
Okay.
And if you think we need the 13th potentially for a meeting, maybe we should have two question marks.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we, you know, January 13th is our regularly scheduled board meeting, and I'm wondering if, you know, where we are with COVID, where we are with other things going on, that maybe we might have to have a regular meeting on Thursday, or if it's a short meeting, we can start, we can start the meeting and then go into the budget workshop. Maybe we can do that. Okay.
That's my update, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a random question? So with the threats and the social media and all that that's happening, is there a way, or has it been discussed, because there, some of the daycares in town are very close to some of our schools? So is there a way, you know, if something is going on, that, you know, if there's a daycare that's in very close proximity to the school, that they can somehow be alerted if something's wrong, so they know to, like, you know, keep the littles inside?
So-
I know they have nothing to do with the district, but like, something happened.
So I know the PD and the town emergency, the EOC as they call it, I believe that they communicate with the, any nearby schools, such as, like, ACES communicates with us. And that's not always through me, that's through the PD or the EOC.
And having been in the buildings, the SROs are really instrumental in terms of speaking with each other and speaking with the PD when something's happening somewhere. For instance, when one of the ACES schools was having an issue this week, I happened to be at the middle school, and the SRO knew, we talked about it, and they were very plantful, so.
And we are, I've spoken with Chief Janishevsky, and we're having some mutual talks between if there's ever a need for emergency evacuation that, for either place, that we could access each other's location as well if needed.
Yeah, okay, that's all, I was just curious.
Melinda, your report?
I don't have a formal report since we did the earlier one today, but one thing that I did want to mention, the middle school had a NEASP visit virtually from Sunday through Wednesday of this week. The faculty was amazing, the administration was amazing, and our students were just fabulous. Many of them were on committees and did some little groups with some of the NEASP members, so it was wonderful. I was there all week at the beginning of the week each day, and the energy was just amazing. So we're very thankful to the middle school staff for going above and beyond this week.
And there was a board component to it as well, and Joe participated with the panel and was peppered with questions and handled them wonderfully. Great representative for the district and the board.
The panel was lovely. Patrick and I had met with them on Monday, really nice people from all different schools in New England. It was wonderful.
And I thank you, Joe. I had to back out, I had a, on a planned business meeting, and so I threw Joe to the trenches. And he did a great job. Jen Stewart, Director of Student Services?
So the American Rescue Plan and SRQ grants were, the American Rescue Plan and SRQ grants were approved-
Put it close to your mouth.
Were approved from the State Department. So we're going to use the money for a very, very different thing. One is we're going to provide professional development to our staff. The training is going to be provided from consultants from CREP on to develop our instruction of writing present levels of performance on the IEP and writing objectives that are aligned to standards. Another portion of the money is going to go to, I'd like to hire a part-time special ed teacher to work with our elementary students to increase our reading, to increase their reading abilities. I'd also like to, between January and June, hire another social worker or school psychologist to support our students at the secondary level. And we also would like to use the money for a VAN for our North Haven Transition Partnership students because the VAN will allow them more opportunities for work experience and community outings that are in North Haven and outside of North Haven. And then lastly, I'm working with the Director of School-Based Health Services to secure two mental health workers to provide services at the elementary level. The Director and I are in the process of completing the application, and currently we have the full-time mental health work at the middle school and the high school that comes from the school-based services. Can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah, go ahead, I have some, you go ahead.
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
So the social worker or school psychologist for secondary would be funded through the American Rescue Plan or SRQ? Correct. And is there a horizon on that? Would that be a permanent position, or would that be time-locked? Nope, it would be January to June, and it all depends, I've posted, and I'm, we haven't gotten many candidates, the pool is very little, but we have a certain amount of money allotted for it, so if we don't use that amount of money between January and June, I can roll it over for some months into the next, into the fall.
We're hopeful in January with some students graduating from college mid-year that we'll get some interest there.
That would be great. And the school-based mental health services going to the elementary school, is there a cost to the district on that one? Yeah, I didn't think so. It's a great program. Thank you. And the Director, since we already have it in place in the middle and high school, she doesn't see it becoming a problem to get it at the elementary level? That's great. And do we know the dollar amount on all five of these items? So I'd have to get back to you to get you the exact, I can get you the exact, I just kind of broke it up tonight. But yeah, I can email you, that's not a problem. I just, it's just for informational purposes, I think these are all great, great things. No, no problem, I can get you the exact, you want the exact of what the grant was allocated for? Like, we were given $80,000 for American Rescue. So, yeah, I think Howard included the, some of the grants in his report, and I looked through those. I'm curious to see, like, what the price tag on each of these five items is, in case we should want to do something else in the future, and like, which specific grant that's coming from. So I can just, I can tell you, I allocated about $55,000 for a mental health worker. Then in, within one of the grants, the SR grant was divided into three buckets. One was for dyslexia, one was for, like, our special population, so I think of that students that are in our Intense Learning Service program, and then they kind of left another bucket for academic instruction. So like, a special ed teacher, I roughly have about $35,000 for that person. The VAN, roughly $35,000 to get the VAN bought this year, and then it will actually cut down on our transportation costs because they currently use M&amp;J. Amanda, I can give you the exact, I just need to get it tomorrow.
The SPED ARP grant?
The ARP grant, yeah.
So that's the 152, 364, that's the total grant. So if you look on the report, it's number 81 on the report, and then there's another one that's a SPED Recovery Activities Grant, that's 69. There's a whole bunch of money that has come out for SPED, SR, and all different things, so, but the one we're talking about here is that number 81, it's code 81 SPED.
And these five items would cover that number 81? They would be covered by number?
They would all be under that piece.
And then the dyslexia piece that is under the SRQ, students, so the state identified, the number of students identified with dyslexia per, what is per the IEP. So we have a certain amount of students in district that have the classification of dyslexia, and we got a certain amount of money. So I'm going to have it next summer, provide reading instruction to those students over the summer months, like July and mid-August to kind of help them, so there is no gap. Great.
So my question, Jen, what you had mentioned at one point, you were looking at special education for a teacher to help with reading?
Oh, yes.
Now, not just for special education, or what about our, you know, for student services for our main students or AP students? What do we have? Will that teacher be working with them too?
No, so this special ed teacher is going to just work with special ed students who need additional support in the area of reading.
But we have the interventionists who work with our students who have reading difficulties or math difficulties.
And these two grants are just for special ed students.
Okay, I think that was going to be my next question. Are these grants only for special ed needs?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jen? Okay, Howard? Got your microphone?
I do not, but I don't think this one's even working.
I don't, I don't think it is.
Sorry. Hello?
You want to sing? It was working, go ahead.
You can hear me?
No.
I'm just going to use my loud voice.
Use your outside voice.
My outside voice, yes.
Our teacher voice.
So budget continues to remain on track. However, there are some areas, as noted in my report, where we exceed, where we're in the negative, however, a lot of those areas haven't been netted against the grant. However, a lot of those areas haven't been netted against the grants that we're, that we're going to get, like excess cost against the tuition. We're, we're over by four hundred thousand there, but we're getting eight hundred thousand when the excess cost grant comes in. So what you're seeing in the operating budget on some of those that I've noted there is just, is just the gross number. It hasn't been netted down to what the net expense will be over the year. But there's two areas that do concern me right now. One is the utilities, electric, and the other is legal. Our legal bills this year have already exceeded the budget that we had in place. So we are going to have to look at other areas. Again, this is where the transfers, when I do transfers between budget items, I'm going to have to start doing it at some point during the year to make those balance out, at least to get them back down to zero. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that we're keeping an eye on that. Keeping an eye on electric, I think will project out, and we do have, our, like I said in the last meeting, natural gas and water are coming in under, so I think those will offset naturally. That's an easy one, but it's the legal bills that are coming in this year that are, that are a little more expensive than what we had budgeted.
Can I ask you a question about the legal bills? Can you give us, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, because I'm sort of out of left field, but is there like a proportion of the increase over the estimated baseline that we can attribute to FOIA requests? Do we know, like, if they're, if FOIA requests are playing a big part in the increased legal fees?
I'm sorry, what kind of?
FOIA.
FMI. No, that's not, it's a lot of SPED.
It, it's a lot of special education, and so if I am in the middle of a mediation, that takes time with the lawyer, so that might offer increasing our fees over time. But it comes from, comes from.
This year, we also had a lot of negotiations with the, with the unions, so that ramped the bill up more than, more than expected, because they went longer, a little more involved. So it, it's kind of that way. So I am, to give you a little insight, I am increasing, I'm going up by ten percent for next year's budget. That's what my projection is right now, just to give you a little insight to where I'm going with this. Just because I, it's one of those areas, like SPED and just SPED expenses, where I created that reserve. Also, I just want to say, like, I am going to increase next year's budget by a little bit more than like the three, five, whatever percent that we normally would. I'm going to do it a little higher than that, because again, I don't know. We only have one negotiation coming up next year, it's the custodians, so it shouldn't be as bad from that perspective on the regular. But again, when SPED gets, when we get involved with SPED, there could be any number of reasons why we could have other legal, legal fees associated with that.
Are we ever allowed to use the SPED reserves for legal fees that are associated with that?
Theoretically, I think we can, yes. So I think it's there and it's available. I think that might be our last, I mean, I think, let's take a look at it as the year goes on, I'll, I'll continue to update you on this. But I, I think if we had to, that could be our last resort at the end of the year, we could just bring it up. We can move some of those legal fees into, against that SPED reserve.
Thank you, Howard.
Second item is the typical transfer report. Is there any, are there any questions on that? Reserve accounts, specifically the medical, dental, it continue to remain in a strong position. Capital projects will be back to six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar balance by the end of the month, now that we've received the reimbursement from the state for, under the SRQ funding for the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we've utilized for the elementary alarm system upgrade. As noted in my report, we are looking to acquire a used VAN from the Chartwell's fleet to replace the current VAN. I even, I think there's pictures in there, if you can see those when you got the report. Funds will come from the surplus funds we have in the cafeteria fund. Currently, the surplus funds there are a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just to give you a little update on that. Currently, our cost for a meal is about two dollars and fifty cents to, for a meal, and we are getting approximately five dollars back from the government for every meal that we get, and every meal is free to every student issue. So we are really doing well under this program, and I think we will continue to do very well. Usually, we, we generate about eighty thousand dollars of income from our cafeteria, cafeteria and cafeteria fund. We're going to be far exceed that this year. So what that allows us to do is to make purchases like this with, for the VAN that we need, because the current VAN we have, have is from two thousand, I think, and it has over two hundred thousand miles on it. And so it's on its last legs, as I've stated before, and so Chartwell's is closing certain places around their, and this, the VAN we're looking at is coming from Woodbridge, New Jersey. It's a, it's two thousand eighteen Dodge van, it's only got twenty-one thousand miles. And so it's, and we're going to, we've made an offer for seventeen thousand five hundred, which is their book value, so we'll see if they come back with that. But that, that's the thought process behind why we're doing this. But again, is the profits that we're making from the cafeteria allow us to then purchase this equipment? Some of the other things of, one of the capital projects that I saw coming as we're doing the budget now, is there's certain refrigeration, refrigerators that need to be replaced. We have one over at Clintonville that's fifty-two years old. Literally, it was put in with the building, and so it's costing more to maintain it, and it's not energy efficient. So there's two ways we can go about that. We can, we are actually applying for a grant the state just came out with, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars max that we can get. But we can also use these funds to replace equipment like that, so that it's not hitting our operating budget. And so that's, we're looking to do that from that perspective. Any questions about that?
I, I do have a couple. Just, it's page nineteen of our packet, which is under your operating budget report. Right, it's the, it's got the, the overage in tuition, and then like the other itemized, items that are over right now, it's about, I think it's like six or seven hundred thousand. And then you said that for the tuition line item, we're four forty over at the moment, but excess cost will bring us eight hundred.
Correct. That's our estimate.
Right. And my question is, these overages, are they estimated for the entirety of the year, or are they what we're over now without?
So we've tried to encumber the entire, we're, we're thinking, I mean, obviously, it could go a little higher. You get a new student, student has to go out, go out, then there could be additional, there could be additional costs coming out. But at the end of the day, this is our best guess as to where it's going to end up at this point in time. Could there be more? There absolutely could be more, but we've tried to encumber, which is what I try to do with the report, so that we, we try and gauge just exactly where, that's where we're going to end up at the end of the year. And this is a number that we think this is where we're going to end up, maybe a little higher than that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Howard?
As you may recall, earlier in the year, I had mentioned that we had filed for unclaimed funds from the state. We had made two claims, one for three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and a second for four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We had received the first claim in March, which I reported to you March of this year. And finally, after providing a bit more detail, we have now received the second claim for the four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So a total of about eight hundred dollars coming back to us that was just sitting out there with the state. These funds, just to remind you, these funds are utilized, we have a, so, and we do jean Fridays at the central office, where everyone has to pay a dollar into a fund to, so you can wear jeans. And we take those funds and we put them into a scholarship fund for all, any, we give out one scholarship a year to any senior who's going into the field of education as they go to college. And it's, last year was five hundred, the first year we did it was five hundred dollars, so that's where these funds go, and they go to supplement that scholarship. So just to be aware, that's what we're doing. And finally, I'd like to update you on the search for an HR and payroll program to replace our current manual pay-for-base process. We have evaluated, evaluated four vendors, Munis, which is our current provider for both our general ledger and all our financials, Frontline, Paycom, and Informed K-12. The evaluation team was myself, Jen Kosniewski, and members of our teams that we work with. Based upon the services provided, which include payroll processing, quarterly, annual compliance filings, and Amanda, I was told, Jen told me that you would like this, UI and UX, she said you would know what it meant.
I do.
For those two of us who didn't until I did, it means user interface and user experience. So she, online onboarding of new employees as well as overall price, we determined that the best option for the district would be Paycom.
Which one?
Paycom.
Paycom.
Munis is currently owned, we currently own Munis, but the cost would be upwards of sixty-five thousand to implement this year, which, but with no, with very little ongoing costs associated with that. Frontline's cost to implement would be around thirty thousand dollars, but ongoing, and ongoing cost would be thirty-two thousand dollars per year. And Paycom's cost to implement is thirteen thousand dollars and thirty-six thousand dollars per year for ongoing costs. The difference in price between Frontline's thirty-two thousand and Paycom's thirty-six thousand per, per year is more than compensated for in the UI and UX, UX differences between the two, the two software, the two programs. And furthermore, the Paycom option also includes the filing of all our quarterly and annual compliance, ten ninety-fives, nine forty-ones, et cetera, which is related to payroll. If you know what those terms are for payroll, you can answer those questions. And that is not included in the Frontline program, with the district being able to shift the liability associated with those filings to Paycom. The liability goes away from us. The intent is to install the program, the process, in process this spring, would go live on July first of two thousand and twenty-two. The thirteen thousand dollar implementation, implementation cost, which was not in the budget, if you recall, we did have, last year, we had approved for a part-time HR person, which that twenty-five thousand dollars is in the budget. We were unable to fill that position and will not be filling that position, but this process will, so going forward, that, that position would have stayed in the budget. So that twenty-five thousand is going to offset thirty-six plus the thirteen this year. So the net cost is going to be about twelve thousand dollar increase in budget costs going forward. We're actually, that'll be in the budget this year because that twenty-five thousand is going to be, because we're not going to hire that person now. We're going to, because we're going to automate the process, we don't need that person. And so that, so that's where we're going. It's actually, so basically, for twelve thousand dollars, we're getting a fully automated onboarding and payroll process. That'll be, that'll be light years ahead of where we are right now. Uh, is there any questions about that? That was a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you. I do need to have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including all the recommended transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Howard, just get ready for January. Next, her to our public comment section of our meeting. I'd just like to say, prior to making your comment, please state your name and address. We also ask you to record that information on the notepad on the table after making your comment. Also, just like to remind people that the board policy right now is five minutes per person at the microphone, and if you have something more to say, if there's some, if everyone else is done speaking, the board will, may ask you to come back up again. Do I have anyone who wants to speak? Just got to put your name and add, address over there when you're done.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Barrett, and I am a member of the Board of Finance, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Finance, I'm simply here as a, as a citizen. But I, I would like to ask, and probably mostly from Mr. Warlow, some questions about not just this fiscal year, but the last fiscal year, just in terms of how we ended it. Because as you know, we're still kind of in the, in the process of closing the books for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one on the town side. So I just have a quick question. I, I read with interest several of the reports from, from Howard, starting in April and May, in which he talked about a strong surplus position. And I looked at the, the balances for the BOE carryover balance, which of course is the, the balance that was brought forward from the surplus from the previous year, as well as the BOE capital improvement, and also looked at the end of April, with all expenditures and all encumbrances built in, it looked like we were facing about a two-point-six million dollar surplus, which was great news. And then at the end of May, again, we had money in the carryover, we had money in capital improvement, and it looked like the budget for the full year with expenditures, with expense, all expenses and the encumbrances built in, we looked like maybe a one-point-six million dollar surplus. Still, still very, very good. But then, of course, the Board of Finance doesn't meet in June or July. We, we assembled in August, and we got the end-of-year reports for both the town side and the, the Board of Ed. And the carryover budget at that point, it was then zero. So four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars were spent in the month of June. Capital improvement balance was still up there at six hundred and forty thousand dollars, but the statement closing out the year said that we closed the general ledger for fiscal year two thousand and twenty dash two thousand and twenty-one on August fifth, having expenditures of fifty-seven, three sixteen, eight eight nine, and that left a balance basically of seven thousand dollars. So I understand that what the reality was, you actually ended with a million, seven thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then about a million, maybe a couple of pennies less, a million dollars was transferred into these three special accounts, special education, capital, and medical. Is that all correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to, want to hear from either board members or as well as from Howard, what is your definition of surplus? Because I, I think that's, that's something that is, is a little bit controversial here, because it sounds like this is not a surplus, but leading up to the final month, you were claiming that it was a very healthy and positive surplus.
Yeah, go ahead, Howard.
Sure, go ahead.
So certainly, so surplus, when we're talking about a surplus, we're talking about surplus to the operating budget, the original fifty-seven million dollars.
Exactly.
Right, so that's what we're talking about.
Right.
So we had a million dollars. What the town allows us to do is to carry those over into capital projects, right? Anytime there's leftover money, leftover money, that's your surplus, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because you put, reserved them, you haven't spent them. Technically, when we file TEFMS, the state, when we file them, when they go to the state, we have to take, to back that out, and we're actually saying that we ended the year with a million dollars on our surplus.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what has to happen. It's still a surplus. All we're doing is reserving that money. That money has not been spent.
Okay. So that, that's really my question. And so it, it's not, it, it is reflected as an expenditure, both in your words as well as as a CIF in the budget, and so, and it's nine hundred and ninety, you know, nine thousand dollars. So let's call it a million dollars. But in any case, it's reflected as an expenditure, but really, you're just moving it from one pocket in your pants to the other, correct? You're just moving it into these three reserve funds. And so my first question is, was any of that money spent during fiscal year two thousand and twenty dash two thousand and twenty-one?
A million dollars?
Yep.
No, that's not a surplus.
Okay. So first you declare surplus, then you transfer the money, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted absolutely clarify that. And then who actually authorized the transfer of this money from the Board of Ed budget into these three surplus funds? Because from my understanding, historically, any money left over at the end of the year many years ago, just went into the general fund. Then we created a capital improvement fund, so money could go into that either from the town or from the Board of Ed. And then I think about two years ago, the Board of Finance memorialized, based upon Connecticut statute, this carryover fund. Now, the carryover fund is separate and distinct from the three reserve funds. So what I'm trying to understand is who actually approved these three transfers of three fifty thousand, three fifty thousand, and three hundred thousand into these three reserve funds? Because as far as I know, it was not this board, it was not the Board of Finance, and it was not the town we-
The Board of the Board is actually, it's a little, like, I reported to everybody, said that's what we're going to be able to pay for my-
There, there was a vote? Because I've, I've gone through the meeting minutes, and I haven't seen any indication of a vote. You might have informed them, but it's my understanding that this requires an actual vote, as you do now, for transfers, right?
Correct.
But that didn't happen for this million dollars.
You know, I don't have the dates that you have, and I will say you are, you have information that most of the public doesn't have available to them. that most of the public doesn't have available to them, so in my opinion, Nancy, you are speaking like as someone from the Board of Finance, but I'm okay with that, you need that information. But I, I want that, that to be clear.
Well, so, so here's the, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Anita. So here's the problem, is that we ask these questions at Board of Finance meetings. Ed Swinkowski can't answer them. I'm not blaming Howard, but Howard is not there. There's no Board of Ed member there to ask these questions. So I am encouraged by Ridge Monaco to come to a Board of Ed meeting and ask these questions. So it's, it's really just for clarification, that's all.
So I don't know what dates it are, it is, but most likely, it, it happened when, as you see, when we do our finances, uh, we go to our, um, finance report, we always put in there, uh, included recommended transfers. He's presented that to the board, and then that's probably, I'm just surmising because I don't know what date this is. That's probably where that approval comes from.
But again, this, this practice just started recently because I believe that Howard brought it to the attention of the Board of Ed, that you should have been doing this for a long, long time and haven't. And so my guess is that this transfer that took place back in either July or August, or maybe it was June, um, actually took place prior to the memorialization of, uh, this board voting on transfers. Is that correct?
That's something we'll have to look back on.
We'll have to look back because I don't know. I know I presented it to them, I don't, I don't recall the report.
Right. So I, I think I remember reading within the last month or two that he brought it to their attention.
It's generally in, it's generally in June, because that's when I know the number, and that's what I can tell.
But that this transfer process has not been voted on until very, very recently. So it's not, okay. So, but just, just to clarify, um, I just wanted to know who authorized?
Just really quickly, though. So I have asked Howard about setting up these reserve funds.
Uh-huh.
Relentlessly. So this was something that was definitely asked for by the board and included and explained to us ad nauseam. I think Joe, I don't want to speak for you, but I think that Joe was pretty excited about the insurance fund too, because of the volatility of things like special education, of things like being self-funded from an insurance perspective and being an employer of like five hundred people.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of volatility, so this is definitely something that we had been asking for. So I don't want to assume that there's any, I don't want anybody to assume that there was any nefarious action or nefarious intent.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm just trying to, to get to the root of, it, it's one thing to say, we should set up a special reserve fund. It's another thing for an entire board to vote, yes, we should take a million dollars of surplus, and we should put three fifty in this account, three fifty in this account, and three hundred in this account. And, and I don't believe that that happened.
I remember talking to Howard.
The technical vote.
Yes, no.
That's what, you're, you're asking about the technical vote, so we just have to look back and see.
We will do.
Okay. And, um, and, and you've already answered my other question about whether any of this money was spent last fiscal year, and the answer is no, because it was a surplus, so it was only spent this year.
And just to clarify one thing, you said the carryover money from the prior year went to zero?
Yes.
That was also moved into the medical. So if you, the four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars?
Yes.
Was part of the three fifty, three fifty, three hundred, was also moved with the four to four sixty-four, was also moved into the medical reserve.
Right. So, so who authorized that?
Again, that was all in the same conversation that we had when we had the, again, I don't know if the technical votes are, I can tell you that I've reported that to the board, I reported that's what we were going to do with the funds, because we needed to get up to the reserve that was required for the med, that the actuaries required us to have, and that's why we put the funds where we did. Because again, the board was concerned about the reserve balances, um, they wanted to increase those reserve balances, and I found this solution for them, and they, again, I don't know if it was technically voted out.